I didn't have my glasses on, so I'm not sure of that.
You know where they are?
I think there's nine.
Yeah.
Is there nine?
Nine.
Sometimes I feel I got them on, I feel...
Unless it's been changed.
Okay, everybody.
I think it is.
Okay, we'll call the order. The Tracy City Council meeting of Monday, April 12th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, why nation and how it is ruled, liberty and justice for all. And I don't see anybody wanting to pray with us tonight.
No.
So we'll be moving right along.
Every night, I pray for you guys.
So can we have, we have to have a few amendments before we can approve the agenda. Right?
Yes, Mayor, so we have item 984, which we'd like to add, which is Resolution 2021-44. This is about closing the street for the spring formal, and we didn't get the information on this until yesterday evening, so we added it today because it's time-sensitive. And that's the only change to the agenda we have tonight.
Okay. Will somebody like to approve the agenda with the amendments?
I'll make that motion.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Host? Anybody from the audience like to talk about something that is not on the agenda? Do we have approval of the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the March 22nd City Council meeting and approval of the municipal accounts payable and payroll. And Resolution 2021-42, changing the date of St. Mary's Church gambling permit.
I'll second it.
First and second, roll call, please.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'd just like to suggest a couple of small changes to the amendments.
Okay.
On page two, where it starts out with Angela Holm with Global Engineering, the third sentence in that paragraph, I think it should read, "Hanger construction and how they can be funded was discussed." Okay, that's one change. And then the bottom, the end of that paragraph, the third sentence from the end of that paragraph, where it says, "Breaking even on a loan for this would be roughly $520 per month per unit." That's referring to, Eric had an example of that $520 a month would be needed to pay off a certain amount of a loan, and I think you said it, no interest.
Yeah, it's over 10 years.
But I just thought we should have that, those specific numbers in that, for that sentence. I can't recall what the...
And that was just a rough thing off the top of my head, anyway. It wasn't even based on anything, you know, other than just a quick and dirty back-of-the-nap thing that I did.
Right, right, I understand.
And so frankly, if you want to take that out in its entirety, because I hate to be held to that, because we don't actually know what the real construction costs are at this point, it's down the road, and things like that, I'm okay with that, too. But that's totally up to you. But as far as what the real numbers are, we don't actually know yet at this point.
Well, I'd be fine with just taking that sentence out.
We'd have to take the next one out, too, then, would we not?
No.
Or I would.
Yeah.
You would.
So I'll amend my motion to approve the minutes with the aforementioned corrections. Allegiance.
I'll second that.
First and...
Well, I wanted to amend my second.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Stay on task. You got it.
Got it. Do we have a first and a second now?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Kootman?
Yes.
So...
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Mayor Cornyn?
Aye. We have one board of the communications appointment that we need to do with Rustov coming on the Charter Commission.
I'll make the motion to approve Rustov to be appointed to the Charter Commission.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Towne?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Schoens?
Aye.
Kootman?
Aye.
Mayor Cornyn?
Aye. City Administrator, do you have something you'd like to tell us?
Sure. I would just like to go through this report that is already in your packet real quick with you. And I, this is our, you know, 2021 work plan, it's based on your goals. And I'm just going to call out some things as I go along. A lot of these things haven't necessarily changed in a couple of weeks, but kind of the things that I'll highlight, I'll go through. The first one, under developing new housing plan for families, a comprehensive plan update, have a citizen committee meeting. There's a citizen steering committee that was appointed by the planning commission. They had their first meeting last Wednesday evening in the library, and we got a presentation from Rosemary Bruce White, who is the person from SRDC who's doing the plan, and got a lot of information about the city, you know, demographics, and trends, and things like that, had some discussions about what we want to get out of it. Kind of the most important thing is that as this moves on, we're going to need a lot of community input, and so there'll be some opportunities to do that at some future events. But it's a big part of what this steering committee is about, is getting community impact, input to the plan, so that when it comes to the planning commission, and eventually you as the City Council, you know that, you know, it's not just a plan that some academic wrote in a vacuum in a room somewhere, that it actually represents the values of the community as much as we can. So that meeting was last week.
How many are on that committee?
I think it's 15, 15?
15.
15 citizens, yes. Yep. Like I said, appointed by the planning commission, and it's a wide variety of people. We've probably, I don't know, given you the names of those people or not, probably not.
No, they did that.
We should do that. Can you make a note that...
What is this committee?
They were the ones with planning minutes.
We got it with the planning minutes, yeah, that you approved, but maybe if you can make a note to send an email to them, just to give them the names of the people on there. Thank you. The, there's this kind of New Movers Grant Program that we're looking at, and we had kind of a good meeting with some folks, business people in town, and the bank, and I think there's some interest in doing some things to incentivize people to coming to the city, particularly if we can kind of package it together with a job. But we're still working on that, but we've made a little bit of progress in reaching out to some people in the community on that. The marketing program, we're going to hear a lot more about that tonight, because we're going to kind of go over some of the branding. And so a lot of that is, a lot of that is a little bit on hold until we finish kind of the branding discussion. The other, the other big piece of it on this list is this historical survey, and we've, we did a draft, not a draft, but we got a draft of the, basically the survey research design, and we're required to submit everything to the state as we go along to the Historical Society, and so we submitted that to them as part of our first milestone. Infrastructure, we signed the contract for Phase 3A2. The mayor and myself and the city attorney did that. They'll probably start pretty quickly, within the next week or two, in the initial parts of that project. The 2021 Street Maintenance Program, which we, you might recall, we took some money out of the sewer fund balance in order to pay for that. We finished the engineering study and got quotes for a portion of it. There's going to be two pieces to this. The first phase of it is, is we've got to, before we can start to do, you know, an overlay or crack seal, there's a lot of potholes that need to be filled, and so we're going to go through and fill the potholes first. After that portion of this completed, there'll be a bid that actually was just announced last week, that will come back to you, the City Council, to approve for the crack sealing portion of it, as well as the seal coat overlay. And you'll see that, you know, come May, and they'll be working on that as the summer goes along, but that project's moving along. Councilmember.
The crack seal, you do the ceiling, or whatever you call it, crack ceiling, and then do you put the chips over the top of that, then, or you're just doing separate streets?
I'm going to have Shane come up and talk about that real quick, in terms of how that process works.
Okay.
That's a good question. The answer is, it depends on the condition of the street, I think, but I'll let Shane answer.
Yeah, kind of in a nutshell, but, so the streets that are in decent condition, that are, there isn't a million cracks on them already, they would call it like a lighter seal coat or a normal seal coat on those. Those will get crack-filled prior to seal coating, which is more of like a rubber. Some of them are rout and, rout and seal, and some are, they call it blow and go, which they blow all the debris out of the cracks, and they dump the rubber in to seal them up. And then after that, they'll come back and seal coat over that, is how the process works. Some of the better, or better, the bad areas, the worst areas over, like Greenwood Avenue, some of that would need to be skim coat, some patching prior to seal coating, and that means that, that street's dried out so bad, that's going to be what I call a heavy seal coat, to simplify things. It's just a different sized rock with a little heavier oil they use to help seal some of that alligator asphalt. It's kind of the only way to really prolong it, you know, a lot of those streets, which is, say, everything south of the tracks is a heavy seal coating, means those streets aren't, they're not even on the list until 3B projects, which isn't funded at this point. You know, so to make them last longer, that's the plan with all of those. There's some in-town streets, but most of the, the heavy seal coating's going to be south of the tracks and with the heavier oil. But the, the streets are real dry, and some of them, I think, I think the last time they ever sealed coated is about 2009. And usually six years is the furthest you want to go out with, with seal coating. You can usually get by seven or eight, but that's usually max, as far as the recommendation of the asphalt. But being they're so dry, they're going to absorb a lot more oil, you know, or a lot bigger, and that'll kind of seal up a lot of those alligator cracks and try to keep water out of it at least, so.
The patching that you need to do before, prior to seal coat, are you guys doing that, or is that part of the bid?
That's, there's too many patches for us to do.
Yeah, I guess...
We're going to do some of it. There's some skim coating to do on the, some of these areas that are real alligatored out, we're just going to skim coat those. There's some other smaller stuff that will skim coat, but for the most part, it's going to be, they'll come in with a grinder, grind them out, and patch it back in, so. And right now, our plan includes front street.
There will, there will actually be two agreements, basically, one for the potholing and one for the crack sealing and seal coat, because they're, so I understand that there are different kinds of companies that do those. You'll approve both of those agreements, but, but, but they'll come in two parts, essentially. We'll have a lot more detail than this, because I know you're going to want to know, which streets are we doing, what are we doing to them, things like that. Our plan is to bring that back when we have those, you know, contracts that you have to approve, probably by the first part of May, for sure. If not, some at the end of the April, for cer, for certain by the first part of May.
Shane, does your department decide what streets you're going to do, or do you have the companies look at them and give you some advice?
Well, ISG kind of, we went around and looked at them together, and most of them is, it's a, it's a grading process. You know, before, we had good, bad, you know, kind of the presentation we had last, I think, late summer, last fall. Well, now we put them in a rating, one, one through 10, one being the worst, 10 being the best, you know, so we kind of base that on, you know, which roads we're throwing good money at good, instead of, you know, just trying to limp along, because you don't want to spend all your money trying to limp these along and then lose all your good roads.
Yes.
So, you know, there's some stuff, you know, the pot of money's only so big, it only goes so far, so we push some stuff, stuff off till next year. We don't know what, what next year's going to bring yet, but that's kind of how we justified where we were going to go, and kind of try to keep it in areas, too. So, but it's kind of the best, say, I went through and, last week, and, you know, kind of had to cut, you know, try to get it within our budget for this year, and cut it down. Hopefully, the prices come back, you know, if they come back real good, you know, maybe we could do more, but we don't really know until, until we get our bid prices back on that part. I'm pretty sure on potholings, what that costs, because, you know, that's something that we, we hire out kind of every year for some of the bigger patches that we get for water main breaks or whatever. So I'm real comfortable with those prices, but seal coating, I mean, 2009 is the last time the city had any seal coating done, so prices are, I have no idea what they, what they run at.
Probably lower, huh?
We, we had, ISG reached out to a few different companies, you know, kind of get a engineer's estimate on about what it costs to help us determine how big of areas we can do with the amount we had, and with a little luck, they'll come back cheaper, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's kind of how that process gets put together, anyway.
So with us having to relook at the whole roads and everything because of the pond decommissioning and everything like that?
Yep.
Were those other areas that now we might not be able to do as soon as we are hoping because of the ponds, were those added into consideration with this, or?
They're, they're in consideration, so Phase 3A3, actually, I, I put all them under 2022 right now, because we don't know exactly what 3A3 is going to be yet, so we didn't want to throw money at seal coating and then have it tore up in two years, because part of that might get done, but as far as what area, we don't know yet. But a lot of those streets are in good enough shape, or another year isn't going to, it's not going to be super detrimental to them, you know, if we know by next year, which we probably will, have an idea, because that funds, those funds have to be used up, you know, by the end, I think, 2023.
2023, yeah.
And that's final completion, so we're going to know next year what's going to be included in that, then we can make that determination. But that's not a very large area, you know...
I just want to make sure they didn't fall off the radar.
Yeah.
Because it's been a change since we started this whole street project.
Without getting too political, this infrastructure money that supposedly they're trying to put together, would we be able to get any of that?
Are you talking about the, the federal?
Yeah.
Money? Short answer is, I don't know. You know, I, I, you hear lots of different things about that particular bill, and I'll likely, they're going to funnel through MINDOT anyway, and I don't know what the process is, and at this point, how much it's going to be, I don't know.
It's up in the air, I guess. I was just curious if we had a chance of, if we had a chance of grabbing a little of that, so.
It's entirely possible, but especially since we already have some federally approved projects like this project here, that that could happen. In my personal experience, the last time we went through this with, you know, with the money that came through with the recession in 2008 and 2009, they were heavily pushing projects that were already shovel-ready, so anything that had already been approved, that's where they were putting a lot of money into. And so having an approved project like this probably helps us, but that's just speculation on my part, we don't know. So that's, that's, we're making progress. I'm excited, because the roads are going to improve dramatically this summer. There's, there's no doubt about that, and, you know, in a couple of years, it will be much improved to where we were, so. That's all I want to talk about on that particular goal. A lot of the other stuff is moving along, but nothing to really highlight at this point. The multipurpose center, we're just waiting on the, on the, you know, design RFP, which you know you're going to see in a few weeks. The last one, I want, I do want to spend a little time talking about is citywide beautification, because this is a new goal for City Council, and you have, we haven't put in a lot of the programs in place yet on this, because we haven't had an opportunity to discuss them. So I want to take a little opportunity to discuss them a little bit. Shane's going to talk about the summer park maintenance in a presentation here in a little bit, so I'm going to skip over that. We have been looking at the band shell in terms of doing some restoration there as well, and we have some quotes on some various things, but it's not really in the budget this year, and so it's something we might have to consider. We're going to do some things, but it, it has some, it has a bad roof, and it has some issues with the ceiling that is all beat up, a lot of the brick, not brick, but it's stone, you know, has been, you know, taken out and damaged over the years. It needs a lot of work, so we're, we're, we're kind of compiling some information on that, but we think it's a future project. I do want to talk about code enforcement, and, you know, we all know that there are some properties in town that need a little help. Jeff and I did a drive-through of the city and developed a series of properties that we thought might need some help. Shane is doing the same thing this week, and is going to look at them from a building maintenance standpoint. I've also asked, you know, Chief Lickety to do the same kinds of things from a code enforcement standpoint. Our plan, then, is, on April 20th, we're going to meet the, all four of us, kind of compare notes on all these properties, because the first thing we want to do is kind of collect the information, okay? Where are the places that really need help? And identify those most problem properties that we have. And kind of the way that we've done it in the past is, we go out and we give them a warning, and they don't clean it up, we cite them, et cetera, et cetera. What I think we ought to be considering is a little bit different approach, maybe more intensive approach for some properties that are repeat offenders, or maybe have lots of particular problems with them, really kind of understand exactly what's going on. Is it that people can't afford it? Is it they don't want to? Is it that, whatever the, whatever the reasons are with those people. So more intensive approach with a few properties that are probably the most problematic. Now, what you need to know is, is that in some cases, if we can't work with people to get the situation to improve, it's going to end up with citations, and it's going to end up in the courts. And that means that those people are going to come to you as the City Council and the mayor, and they're going to complain, because they're going to feel like, oh, why are you, why are you targeting me? Why are you picking on me? But our belief is, is that if we could take a more intensive approach on the worst offenders, and try to kind of just knock it off one, you know, one property at a time, that's a better approach than, than the way we're doing it. That's the, the working theory at the moment, and I welcome any feedback on that, you know, from you, particularly if you've got places that you would like us to look at. But, but, but our intent is to take a more, more intensive approach to this, this summer than we have in the past. Is there any questions about that?
Will that include the mobile home park?
Yeah, we'll include the mobile home park. That's problematic in and of itself, because, you know, who do you cite? Do you cite the owner? Do you cite the, you know, but yes, it will include the mobile home park. I can't, I don't know if the mobile home park's going to be on the intensive list, but it'll be, we'll look at it, for sure.
My concern with the intensive list is that does really open up to people saying, "Why are you targeting me?"
Yep.
When this property, two houses down, is a mess also.
Yep.
So that's, I don't have a problem with us getting a lot stricter on this and everything. I just have a problem, a concern with the intensive list, because I can already hear it.
Yep.
You know, why, why are you coming after me but not these? Well, I'm in good conscience, can't say, "Well, because we don't think that looks as bad." Well, if we've got the rules, I think we have to be fair to everybody, so I don't know if you're still going to be doing other things to other people that are not meeting code.
Hopefully, we'll be doing anything to anybody, but...
Well, but I mean, but to give the warnings to everybody that's not meeting code?
This comes down to a question of resources, right? I mean, we can, we can kind of spread our resources then, like peanut butter, across everybody, you know, an inch deep, you know, or we can build it up and, you know, do a little bit more focused effort. And so I'm not saying that we're not going to cite people if there's going to be an issue. What I will say is that there are always going to be people who will say, "Well, you didn't cite them, and you cited me," because we can't catch everybody all the time, we can't be every place and see everything all of the time. And so if we have a particular complaint, let's say somebody comes back and says, "Well, you should talk to those people, and, you know, that, that house isn't right," well, then we'll go out and do that. But, but, but ultimately, yeah, you're, you're going to have those kinds of complaints, for sure, absolutely.
I don't want people not getting warnings because of who they are.
Absolutely.
They have to be fair. You cannot, "Oh, I don't want to write this one up because I'm..."
If that's your concern, I would share that. We should not be, if there are certain people that have particular issues, it doesn't matter who they are. I don't care if they're the mayor, or a council member, or if they're, you know, somebody that just moved to town five minutes ago. You know, they should all be treated the same. I absolutely agree with that.
I think what Jerry, and I agree with Jerry, that we can't pick and choose. Is that what you're saying, Jerry? And I agree, when I did this, when I was on the nuisance committee, I had people come on up to me and saying, "Hey, if they clean their property up, I'll clean mine up." That's what you're going to hear.
What I am saying is, we're going to spend some more intensive time on the worst properties that we have not done in the past. That's what I'm telling you. And we'll, we'll bring that back. I'll provide as much information as I can. I don't necessarily want to, you know, create a list of properties like some kind of, you know, wanted list or something, and make it public, you know? I don't think that's appropriate either, because people deserve to, you know, have some privacy and dignity, but, but we'll give you an update, you know, as far as how that's, that's going. And, you know, it's, it's something new to try, because doing the same thing over and over again is not going to get us a different result.
Now, when you go through the town, do you, are you going through the alleys, too, Shane? Okay.
Yep.
Because I know there's some in town here that did not come to you for a building permit.
I'm, I'm sure that's the case, yes.
There's a slug of them.
Yeah.
You'll see it in the alleys.
Yeah. I mean, we have situations like that, where we have things that clearly, because you've got two issues here, you've got nuisance code issues, and then you've got building code issues. And those are sometimes the same property, but not always.
So, so you notice that, then? What do you do? Bring that to attention, then, or what?
Yeah, I mean, we can cite them, and we bring, we put them on a list, and so we're going to start maintaining a list of, and, and that's, this is part of the issue, is that, part of the way that we have this structured, where we have Jason doing nuisance codes, and we have Shane doing building codes, is that you don't have that kind of collaboration, because sometimes it's the same people, right? And so we want to get all the information together in one spot, so we know exactly what we're dealing with, and everybody knows it, and, you know, work together, you know, on that list, as opposed to kind of working separately and sporadically. And so it's, it's, it's a more collaborative approach, it's a more intensive approach, and holistic, I think it's a more holistic approach. We'll, we'll see, you know, I, I'm welcome, I don't know if this is going to work, I'm just going to be honest with you, you know, we're, but we're going to try something different and see what happens this summer.
I think the key here, Eric, is follow-up, and we didn't have that before. We would go out... We would go out, write them up, and then we did nothing with it. So we gotta have follow-up.
I'm gonna be honest with you, there has been a feeling amongst the staff, and this is before, before me, but that we did not want to spend the money to go to court in some cases. And so therefore, this is the message they got from city council. We did not want to go to court to spend the money in some of these cases. And so why should we bother to push real hard? Because we're, we're, it's just not going to happen anyway. If I don't hear that from you as a group, which is why I'm telling you that, that we're gonna push a little harder, that's gonna result in some court cases, it's, it's gonna cost a little more money, probably, but that is the nature of the beast.
So if the city takes them to court and it's found that they are a nuisance or whatever, do we have to pay that, or does that get tacked onto their, uh?
That's a good question, I don't know.
So you guys have a contract with the Lyon County Attorney's Office for prosecution? I don't know, is that a monthly fee, or is it like, is it an hourly rate?
We have a joint operating, a joint powers agreement with them, and I just, I don't remember what the details are on that.
Because if it's just you pay them a monthly amount for their services, then it's regard, it doesn't matter how many citations you send them, because it's their job to prosecute them? And with the criminal, so there's, there's kind of two ways you can proceed with correcting nuisance properties. You have the criminal citation, and if you issue them a citation, they have to appear in court, and they can contest it, and they might have a trial. It's a misdemeanor offense. So the trial may take place six months from the date that they're issued the citation. If they're found guilty, then the court imposes a sentence, would order them to clean up the property. But they could choose not to do so, and then there's a consequence, they could serve jail time. And then ultimately, once they serve the jail time, the property doesn't get cleaned up. The second option of process is the abatement process, and we, we utilize that on the one-five-seven Third Street building. That's where the city council declares that a nuisance, serves them that order that says you need to clean up X, Y, and Z within a specified timeframe. And if they don't, or they don't respond or appear before the council, then you can file that with the district court in a civil action, and get an order from the court allowing the city to go on the property, clean it up, assess it to the property, or get a judgment against them. That obviously is more costly, but you can get some of your cost back. With the criminal, um, prosecution aspect, you're not gonna get your cost back. You're just hoping that they either voluntarily clean up the property, or if they're ordered to do so by the judge, that they follow through and do it. So there's no guarantee that asset, that part, but that's probably more cost-effective, because you guys are paying the Lyon County Attorney's Office, uh, probably a fixed monthly fee.
The decision historically had been to do number one, more than number two. And, you know, and, and what happened is, is that eventually, we didn't even do a lot of number one. But I don't think that citing people, if someone doesn't care to clean up their property, probably isn't gonna, you know, make them clean it up, you know? If you're really serious about this, it's really, we have to seriously consider an abatement action now. Ultimately, that'll come back to you. And so we're gonna try kind of a, a different approach. And then if we have pushback from people, um, then we're probably gonna have to bring some of the stuff back to you for some decisions about how to proceed. But, but if you want stronger code enforcement, you're definitely, it's gonna be more costly, it's gonna take more effort, and it is definitely gonna, you're gonna get some pushback from some citizens.
Is there a way we could get some citizens to volunteers? Say that's an elderly person, just don't have what it takes to clean up their property, so these people would volunteer to go in and help them?
I think that's a great idea. And let, let me move into the next thing that I want to talk about, cause it's related to that. Cause I believe that there's the carrot, and then there's the stick, right? We, what we've been talking about so far is the stick. But you have to have, you know, a helping hand, because in some cases, it's people that maybe they, maybe they're elderly and they can't physically do it. Maybe they're, they don't have the money, or whatever the reason is. And so if you brought in some volunteers or provided some resources, that could help. This is one of the reasons why I sent, um, you some information about the Keep America Beautiful program, uh, which is a national organization out of Omaha. They have six hundred and eighty-some chapters nationwide. And they can help provide you the tools, um, in order to do some of these kinds of programs. So it, it's a minimal cost, it's about fifteen hundred dollars a year for membership dues. But, but ultimately, it's a volunteer kind of driven situation. So I've been involved in this before, and I'll give you an example of how something like that might work. So I was involved in a, in a, um, Keep America Beautiful affiliate. We had identified some, uh, one of the problem areas of, of houses that needed to be painted, and you can, you can see that here in town, too. And we, we said, "Well, we'll provide a bunch of volunteers, and, you know, the city will chip in the paints." And then we had people apply, because if, if they say that they can't afford it, you wanna have some documentation that says that they can't afford it. And, and then we had a, a whole Saturday where you had four or five houses, and you had, you know, a bunch of volunteers go out and, you know, take care of it, paint these people's homes. Doesn't have to be paint, it could be all kinds of things. It could be a yard cleanup, or it could be, "We're gonna go in and take the trash off your property," or whatever it happens to be. But you have to have that volunteer piece to go along with it. And so this is very much a volunteer-driven activity. This could be a board that you appoint, but ultimately, it's gotta be a volunteer activity where they're going out and doing things. It's a little different than the planning commission where you're hearing cases or whatever. This is very much a in-the-community volunteer kind of program. I was talking to Shane about this earlier today, actually, because a lot of times, like, for example, um, C and B, um, came to him and said, "We'd like to do a community, uh, activity of some kind. Uh, and we're gonna take a whole day, and all of our employees want to go out and, and clean something up." And we're gonna find something like that to do for them. But if we had an organization like this, and we had ready-made, a ready-made activity or a series of events over time, we could say, we could marshal all these activities. It would be them, or Boy Scouts, or school, or churches, or whatever, whatever happens to be, because people are looking for these kinds of volunteer activities. For this to be successful, though, it, there has to be citizens to step up and say, "Yes, you know what, we care about this issue, and we're going to, you know, work with the city staff and the city council to create these programs." And so, you know, that's, that's my thought about how we can do what you exactly you're describing. Tell me what your thoughts are about that, if you would like us to pursue that.
So I have a question about that.
Sure.
First of all, I like the idea, but second of all, if we're getting the volunteers and we're providing the money for the paint, then why are we paying, or why do we pay in Keep America Beautification Program money for?
Well, we don't have to, you know? We could do this on our own if we wanted to. But what they do is they provide, you know, uh, uh, program elements for you. Like, um, they have different things that they, that, that happen every year, like, uh, something they call the Great America Cleanup. And so some of it is part of, being part of a national organization that provides those resources. They have some grant programs also, you know, that we could potentially, potentially tap into. I mean, ultimately, yeah, could we design our own programs? Yes, we can, you know? Is it nice to have someone say, "Here's all this information about how to do this, go do it"? You know, you've gotta decide whether or not that's worth the money for it. But we could absolutely do it on our own.
Any information, did it have the cost?
It's in, it's buried in there somewhere, but I know for a community of our size, it's fifteen hundred dollars a year.
One, I was approached one time with this cleanup, and they brought up a good point, especially when we do the dumpster in the spring of the year. They have no way of getting it there. And that's why I, I don't like the dumpster way of doing it. I like the curbside, curbside pickup. And if we're gonna have two times this year, I think we, either dumpster and the curbside, see which ones works the best. I think the curbside pickup, what you're gonna find is the best way to go.
I, I, I think certainly that's something that you could do. I, I've been in other cities that do that kinda curbside pickup like that. Um, in some cases, they did it for free, and in other cases, they, you know, they actually charge people, you know, for, to, to come by and do it. So you could certainly do that. It takes a lot more resources to make that happen, and you'd have to put some money into it. And, uh, if that's something you'd like to do, yeah, we could certainly talk about that more. We don't have that in the work plan this year. We only have what we have done in the past, which is the, uh, Cleanup Day, which is on May fifteenth. But we certainly could, we certainly could if we wanted to put more resources into it.
Would we get, would we get into trouble with, with that idea of providing people? Say like we had the basketball team or the football team, would we get into trouble, uh, liability-wise on that, or not?
You know, we probably wanna have volunteers sign a waiver, but I'm gonna ask Matt that question.
You're gonna need, obviously consent from the property owner, and you'll have a slew of waivers that all the volunteers sign. And that's probably some of the documents that if you would be engaged in that membership, that they would have those, they probably have those forms already created. But, yeah, there's, there's the documents that you would want prepared that everyone signs, that, you know, shifts liability and, and waives that from the city's perspective.
A long time ago, when I was a J C member, we went around the city, it's a different city, of course, but we went around the city and cleaned up branches, and cleaned up stuff, and we just did it as a volunteer to help the city.
Right.
We didn't have any of those things that we felt we needed to sign, but that was before the world we live in now.
Before lawyers.
Happy world.
Yeah. I mean, we just, something to do.
Eric, who did you have down, maybe Shane, who did you have down at the dumpster last year? Who was, who was helping you?
Diane was there, she could probably answer that.
Both Diane, um, and the appliance guy, and I think, uh...
Two Cub Scouts.
Two Scouts.
Okay, so then what, what George is saying is, is Cub Scouts, we got an issue there then. That's what he's saying, as far as the insurance.
Well, we're not entering part of the property.
Well, I think what George is saying is if, like, we had a group of, like, the football team or somebody go out to these places that couldn't bring it to here, to go out and get it and bring it here. Isn't that what you were saying?
That, in the old days, that's how it was done.
I think we could.
What we can do now legally, I don't know.
I think we could do it, we just would have to, as Matt said, have them sign a liability waiver. That basically says that if you get hurt, you know, it's, it's not our fault. But these are all the kinda details that we can work out, because we're not the first city in the world to have volunteers do cleanups, you know? And so we just, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we can just learn from what other people did. But if you, if you'd like me to do some more research on this and come back with a specific proposal, whether it be with Keep America Beautiful or to do our own, I think it does fill a need in the community. I would ask you, though, to think about, who are the people in the community that could really lead this? Cause it's gotta be a, you know, it's gotta be a community-led effort, you know? And if there are people that are really passionate about this, that's, that's the best way to make this successful. So is that, is that something you'd like more information on and try to move forward with?
I think it's a good idea.
I think so.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, we'll bring some, something back. We'll bring back a program to you.
You know, and I have a question, but it's about the old Anderson Building, so should I wait till later to ask you that?
No, go ahead.
So when I was reading through those documents, so does the bank own it, or does that other guy own it?
The bank owns it.
Even though they say they don't know if they own it?
Correct. So what happened there was, they may have had a, a sale agreement with that so-called, I think, Eric Alcozar, but there was never a deed recorded at the recorder's office, because there was outstanding taxes owed. And in order to record and transfer property, you had to pay the entire amount of outstanding real estate taxes. So that wasn't done. So for legal purposes, they're the recorded property owner, and they still own it.
Where are we at with that, then?
We're waiting for the sixty-day judgment time to run, and then we can, we'll take efforts to, to collect that in Michigan. Cause that's where the, the bank and the land company is located.
How much longer we go, then?
I, it's, uh, I think it's April sometime, so we're coming up on that time pretty soon.
It's early in April.
I know that overhang is looking terrible, I mean, it's not safe.
We're working our way through that process. Two more, two more things, um, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Shane. I, I was, this has come up as an issue in the past, and I was given some additional information about the hanging baskets that have been done previously, uh, in the city. Um, this is related to beautification, which is why I'm bringing it up at this point, because it's, it's one of your priorities. Um, and Jeff Farber has given me, you know, kind of the way it has worked in the past is that there have been baskets that have been, uh, put out and then purchased by the, the business owner, or the city, or whoever happens to be in front of. And then in the past, the city has paid for watering, which is like ninety-five dollars for the summer for, per pot. It turns out to be forty to sixty pots, roughly four or five thousand dollars to do, you know, this program. So, so Jeff sent me some information about it. And, um, it's something that, we didn't do this last year, because I think the feeling from the previous city council was that they, you know, they, they thought that the business owner should, should pay that cost, uh, rather than the city in terms of the watering, and so we didn't do it last year. But I wanted to bring it up, because it's part of this goal, and we got some information from Jeff on it, and we're kind of, you know, on that, uh, at the moment. And so we didn't specifically budget for it in twenty-twenty-one, I will tell you. Um, so I have some concerns about how we're gonna pay for it, because we, you know, when we're talking about five thousand dollars, and it's really kind of an operating supply, you know, we only have about twenty thousand dollars in operating and supply and maintenance just for, for downtown in this building, and the whole budget, anyway. And so five thousand dollars is a pretty big, big hit to that budget. I'd probably wanna limit it if we did it. Um, we could figure out a way to, to pay for it. Krista and I talked about it a little bit earlier. We don't think there's a ton of wiggle room there, but maybe we can pull some resources somewhere else. But I really just wanted to get a sense for you, if you think this is something that you would like us to do this year or not.
Would, would we need that many, so to speak? If you're talking, are we talking all over town, or just Main Street, or?
It's primarily gonna be downtown. We used to do a lot of them out on the highway, but Excel won't allow us to put them out the poles anymore, because, um, so it would be, there could potentially be a limited amount on fourteen, but I think it's mostly downtown.
I said, we didn't do fourteen.
We didn't do fourteen.
It was just downtown, but it was a couple of the streets.
Yep.
I don't think we did anything on fourteen.
That may be the case, I wasn't here at that time, but I, I understand it was normally about forty to sixty of these pots at ninety-five dollars apiece, is what we're talking about.
And the property owner or the business would pay for the pot, we just gotta pay the...
We would pay the watering, yes, yes, that's correct.
Is it just the hanging baskets, or is that pots that they're standing in front of the business?
I think it's both, to be honest.
Well, I think that flower, blooming flower plants, hanging pots in the downtown district makes a very positive statement about our community. It tells people that we're proud of our town, we're, uh, this is a good place to live. We care, and for a relatively small, um, investment, I think that it's well worth, uh, that the city would support this to some degree. It's a nice, uh, community-city partnership, because the property owner, the, um, citizens or just interested person are buying the pots, and, uh, so the city's contribution would be, um, for the fertilizing and watering. So I'd be willing to support it up to, um, a certain number of pots, whatever you think is reasonable.
I guess I agree with you, Seth, I think we need to do this, but I, I, for some reason, Highway fourteen, we just neglect it. I, I, people passing through, I, I think they're gonna see that more than downtown Tracy, Minnesota. That's my theory on it. I, Highway fourteen, we do absolutely nothing. And where do people pass through there? That's, Highway fourteen is busy coming through there. We show, we show nothing, what you're talking about.
Well, I wouldn't say that, Ron. We've got, uh, four parks along Highway fourteen. We've got, um, different, uh, flower beds that I think the city originally installed, with, uh, rose bushes and so forth. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do, um, uh, if, uh... so forth. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do, if a, if a business owner on Highway 14 wanted to buy their $95 container of flowers on Highway 14, I don't, we, I wouldn't, I'd support the city watering that plant as well. But it's a little bit of, I, I don't want to get on Highway 14 to kind of sideline our, the downtown project that we have had in existence for a number of years. It's where the Boxcar Day Parade goes and people going to the events at the DMC go.
Well, would, would we need to, first off, see how many people are interested and then decide how deep we're going to get into it. I mean, if there's only 10 pots, that's not going to be so bad to water. Is there going to be 50 pots or plants or whatever you call them? So let's figure out the need before we start worrying about if we should do it or shouldn't do it.
But we also have to figure out the, the cost. Are we going to pay 100% of the watering? Because a lot of citizens are not happy about their tax money going to water a plant in front of a private business.
Right.
They're like, because that's where we went back to Jeff Farber and asked him to just come up with a, a price that included buying it, fertilizing it, and watering it. That it would, all of those things included, he would charge a business this much per pot instead of the city paying him to do the fertilizing and the watering. That it would be the business that would pay for one price because if they don't water and fertilize it, and most businesses, you know, don't have the equipment to go up and, and do that. So what would be the price for a business per pot that would include it all? It was an all-inclusive price. Because that's going to make a difference to a business if they're told, okay, it's going to cost you $95 or it's going to cost you $190. You know, if they're willing to do it or not.
One, one approach to this is to say, we'll chip in X amount of money for this and, you know, we end up subsidizing it to some degree. And, and then, and then, and then call that, call that good. That's one, that's one way to do it is to kind of limit the, you know, amount. Because I, I do think what Jeff would probably tell you if you were here is that the, the demand was between some, somewhere between 40 and 60. That's what historically it has been. So I think we probably know that.
So if there's 40 plants, the city would cost share a little bit of it?
Some portion of it.
20%, 5%, whatever. I don't know how to come up with that number.
We could, we could put a percent on it. We could say we'll do X percent. Yeah.
And you're going to offer that to the people on the highway too, the business people?
They can't hang it. That's the only thing.
Not to hang it, but like if they have a pot.
But then you had, because that was discussed and there had to be a pad or something.
For the pot?
That I don't know.
I'm looking.
Well, I think that was only if it was by the light pole. There had to be a pad. But if it's in front of a business, I mean, I'm like the same thing with him. It used to just irritate me when I was on Highway 14 that they did everything for downtown and nothing for the highway that people drive through. Because if Highway 14 doesn't look good, what's going to make you want to drive downtown? That's my father.
I think Eric, Eric and I discussed banners at one time. Remember Eric?
Yeah, that's, that's on the work plan.
And I think banners would even dress up 14.
Yep.
You know, and I know there's, we can put them on poles there, you know.
Can't we?
Well, there's, there's, there's a challenge. Let me, let me talk about that. There's a handful of city-owned poles that we could put them on, but Excel does not want us currently to fix anything to a pole now.
I was going to say, I think that was when they put up all those new poles. That's where they said they don't want anything on those poles.
We, we could take another run at Excel and see what they have to say, but, but, but my guess is that that's what they're going to tell us.
We know they won't let us put up the Boxcar banner anymore across the highway.
Well, I, I will say that, I mean, banners are kind of on the work plan as something that we're going to bring back to you at some point, a little bit later in the summer for sure, after we finish this logo discussion. But, but, but I, I think, I think generally those kinds of welcoming things make sense.
Do you feel, do you feel the pots, if we put flower pots out, say I'm going to pick on Midwest Supply, put one up by their door somewhere, do you think people are going to see that?
I don't think so. I don't think they're going, I'm not saying they won't see it, but I don't know if they see it as beautification of the, when you're driving down the highway. If it's up by the business, it's just part of the business. And that's where then there's talk about if it was going to be by the poles, but because we couldn't put it on the poles, that there would be like a cement slab or something poured next to a pole. So it would be right along the corridor. Because that's where it's going to look, you're going to get your most bang for your buck is along the corridor. But I was going to ask about, because I can't remember where I read it, about the, the flag or the banners or whatever for downtown. If we're doing those, do we need the flowers? Because we, I mean.
It's, it's a good question. We, I don't know if we'd be able to get banners done this summer or not, you know, so that's, that's one consideration. But honestly, the flowers thing has come up more recently. And, and, you know, my, 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 my thought had been to do the banners, yes, and use them more permanently downtown. So yeah, that might be a trade-off. Maybe you, maybe you do banners instead of flowers or, yeah.
Well, maybe it's a thing where you could do banners and flowers. I mean, flowers do look good. But maybe you didn't have to have four of them.
It looks spectacular. I mean, I just think we, it's something we need to do.
I know at Worthington, it looks really nice when you go down Main Street there. I agree with you Seth. I agree.
I've been to a lot of cities where they have them flower pots hanging too, and they do look nice, even though I'm not a flower person, but they do look nice.
Thanks George.
You'd probably rather see corn.
Yeah, I'd rather see bean, beaner.
Well, Eric, do you think that you could find $3,000?
We could find $3,000 somewhere on your $2.6 million general fund. Yes, I think so.
Okay. I just, I'd like to make a motion stating that the city will allocate up to $3,000 for watering the hanging pots downtown and any that are, any flower planters that are placed along the Highway 14 corridor. And on a first-come, first-served basis. And hopefully Jeff has enough interest that he can sell 60 flower pots, containers, baskets. And then if necessary, I really believe that there are people in town who would be, and in the country, who'd be willing to throw in $100 to so-called adopt a, a.
Adopt a pot.
Flower, flower basket for the summer. I know I would. It's, it's just a relatively small cost for something that we can really spruce up our community.
Do you, do you want that the first-come, first-served or just spread that 3,000 out, however many we have? I mean, if there's 60, then just divide that amount. Everybody gets the same.
Everybody gets.
Jerry kind of likes to keep fair for everybody. So that would be.
Right. So if it's, if it's 30, then it's $100 apiece. If it's 60, then it's $50.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to change your motion, but I just wondered what you thought of that. Because I would feel real bad if I was one person short from getting there in time. Maybe it took me two weeks to think about it and then I was, I missed out. And that's not going to happen, but if I was that person.
Okay, we're going to need more than $3,000 though, because that's $3,000 to spread amongst whoever does it. But the city themselves, we buy however many and we need to have that then found in our budget. So.
And I think that is budgeting for.
We, 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 last year, we, we did have a couple of pots out front. I think it was a couple hundred dollars that we took out of the, the fund for this, from this building.
But we've done poles here. We've done poles in front of the library.
I'm just telling you what we did last year. And, and last year, we did two pots and we, we, we easily found that money in the budget for here. If we're going to do more than that, yes, we're going to have to find, you know, a place in the budget for it. I don't probably need a formal motion necessarily at this point. I, I get the sense that probably most of you say we should do that. I would like to get this, and I can tell you where it's going to come from. I can send you an email with that information a little bit later. Krista and I have been working on this today, actually. And we think we can find some. I just kind of want to get a sense for, you know, what the, what the, what the number is that we, you want to allocate to something like this.
Seth has a good number.
So 3,000? Do we want, do you want to allocate it first-come, first-served or kind of spread it out wherever, to, to everybody?
I think you need to spread it out.
Okay. I hear spread it out.
I'm a spreader, Aldous.
So, so $3,000 spreader.
And is Jeff going to have the flowers to do it? Because we always had to decide early.
I think that's why we're having this conversation now. Yeah.
I just don't want us going through all this discussion and all this debating to not have flowers.
Yep. All, I, he, he sent me the information on Friday, so I, I don't think he would have done that if he. Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll find, Krista and I will find $3,000 in the budget. We'll let you know where, where it's coming from. And, and we'll, we'll let Jeff know that we're going to allocate that to the program and, and it's up to him to sell the flowers or produce the flowers and then we'll, we'll chip in that amount.
Possibly the paper could put in, adopt a flower.
Adopt a flower. Last, last, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So do the businesses know how much they're actually going to cost yet or not?
Yeah, I think that he does have a set price for that. I don't remember what it is off the top of my head. It's, it's, I think it's double. I think it's like 95 if you wanted just a pot and like 95, double that if you want it to water, if you want him to water it or you can water it yourself. But that sounds about right to me, but I'll verify that. Last thing for you all. So I sent you an email on this earlier, although it was late. You may not have seen it, but Southwest Sanitation's contract for our garbage collection is up at the end of June. And they have sent me a letter, which I passed on to you, basically saying they'd like you to renew the contract. I had a conversation with Matt about this and reviewed your purchasing policy. You can legally extend their contract because it's under $175,000. It's about $120,000 a year. However, your purchasing policy says that you're supposed to bid everything over $100,000 a year. And so really, you know, I, I'm, I'm passing it along mostly because Southwest Sanitation is making the request. And so I'm kind of making the request on their behalf. Generally, we do like to bid things at that amount because it's kind of a big deal and it's your policy. But because it's your policy, we can also make adjustments to that policy, you know, for, for the service. So I just want to get a little bit of direction and I want to be able to get back to Southwest Sanitation and let them know one way or the other if we're going to extend it or if we're going to bid it. What are your thoughts about that?
Are, are we going to open up, I don't know if a can of worms is right, but if we go to bid and it's higher, then what?
Higher than, than?
The, the one we have right now. See, we was extending.
It, it could be. That's a risk. Yep.
I mean, we got to think that through a little bit.
You got to think Southwest Sanitation is going to bid on it. And I got to think that in a bidding situation, they're not going to bid any higher than, than what they have already told us they would do anyway.
Okay.
That, I, I, that's just speculation, but I, I got to think that.
I honestly think we should bid it.
I agree. I, I, Southwest Sanitation has done a nice job, but we owe it to our citizens to.
Well, and it's our policy. And we'll have policies if we're not going to do it.
Anybody disagree with that sentiment? Okay. Well, we'll start preparing the bid documents for that and, and I'll let them know that that's what we're going to do. That's all I have. I don't think Dale is here to do the fire chief. He often isn't because they meet on Monday nights, quarterly report. And with that then, we just have Shane to do kind of a presentation on park maintenance and the summer park maintenance.
TV there. Look at that. That will not be your, I'll turn it on. Take some of your real estate here. All right. So get started here. I guess.
Shane, can you peel the mask off so we can hear better?
Thank you.
Eric and I went around and looked at all the parks here. It's probably a month ago, maybe. As you see, some, some of these pictures may have snow in them. We kind of observed and see what each park needed as far as repairs go and what we can kind of plan for, for this year, next year. I know we talked about the ban shell earlier in the meeting today and that's one of them on the list. But so I just, what I did is I kind of put a picture of the overview of the park as you know which park it is. I kind of had a list of what each park has for equipment and then a list of kind of repairs that we have planned for that park. It's 72 slides, but I promise I won't make it that painful. So I just have these all in alphabetical order. So Central Park, maybe no, right in the center of town, kind of the original park in the city. Ice rink, warming house, tennis volleyball court. There's multiple flower gardens. And on the north side of the tennis courts was just developed. And then south side of the park, they made a few plots actually last year to help beautify the park a little bit. Ban shell, as you can tell in this picture, needs some work. It's got some roofing issues and just needs a lot of TLC. Restrooms, these are ADA accessible. Disc golf basket, get some benches. Swings currently in two locations. If everything goes through this grant, so you, you know, a lot of that will change. The swings would stay. The larger swings on the left would stay. We'd have, we'd improve some of the grounds underneath. We kind of go over that here coming up. And then these are the two, say legal spring toys. On the east side of the park now, they'll, they'll get probably relocated close to the newer equipment. If that were to happen, probably be the best place for those. They have wood chips and stuff underneath them. Picket shelter. Got climbing bars. And as far as we know, those are staying. There's some monkey bars, actually. I missed those. They're kind of right over here, but. And then the old equipment that's slated for replacement. So we got sad repairs on area of the Phase One project. Something that got hit with the snowplows and whatnot. So we go around to fix those. Warming house repairs, replacement of the building. The floor of that building's in really tough shape and there's actually no insulation in it. So makes it harder to heat. So I guess there'll be talks on what we want to do with that building. Lighting upgrades, the ice rink. We had two poles in the last couple of years that have completely rotted out and fell over. We got the last one there that's kind of leaning. We're going to get that pulled out. Then we have to look at some different options as far as the ice rink being a viable, having a viable future. Scrub roof of the restrooms. There's a tree above that and every year. Scrubbed rough for the restrooms, um, there's a tree above that and every year, we're cleaning the roof of it. Usually, about June when it warms up, uh, we get that all scrubbed up, but, um, there's thirty feet of sidewalk on the east side of the park. Uh, does not meet ADA, um, you know, it's got a ramp there, but it's, it's super narrow. That'd be something that we look at, um, actually submitted as part of the grant for the, for the park equipment as an addition to help, uh, bring ADA requirements up to snuff there. Band shell and stone repair, there's some lighting upgrades, uh, cleaning, uh, new ceiling. Um, the roof condition, there is some small leaks starting to develop there, um, and then patch and then paint the exterior again. Uh, we got some planned improvements, um, so this is kinda all stemming on the grant, uh, approval. Uh, remove the play seat, uh, features from the east side of the park, uh, with the exception of monkey bars and climbing structure. Uh, remove the main play structure, uh, install new play structure. I'll show that on the next slide, kinda, slide, kinda the plan there. And, um, as you, probably you, you all know, seventy-four thousand, uh, for the, the plate structure, then the site work and that's including city labor and, uh, some sidewalk improvements, some signage. I was looking at twenty-nine thousand for that part, portion of it. Um, remove P rock, add wood fiber under the current swings to minimize injury risks and add parking to comply with ADA requirements. Um, right now, we're looking at putting that on the road. Just really no parking lot designated for the, for Central Park. So this is kinda the layout. Um, Eric, you put this together as far as where things are, but, you know, right, the, the playground's currently here, the main play structure. Planning on moving that over a little bit, uh, there's more room there that minimize having to remove trees, um, for that area. And then this is the area on the east side, they get removed except for the, by this tree is, uh, the two climbing structures, so. Uh, we got Greenwood Park, um, there's newer equipment in there that were put in in, uh, I think twenty sixteen. Um, some swings there, we brought them up to compliance as far as the swings go, some were too close together. Um, and we had to remove some stuff. That year, we put the equipment in, there's some slides and things that were, um, way out of date, um, not real safe to be on, so. Uh, big improvement there. There's some swings, um, some teeters there. And the little spinning thing. Um, you got a basket, small basketball court, it's kind of a half court, sorta, um, and we got, uh, newer picnic tables there. They were put in with that, uh, with the new structure, so you can see there. Um, that's, there's a baseball backstop there, um, I think that dates back quite a few years ago, um, from what I've heard, anyway. So maintenance items for Greenwood Park, it's in pretty good shape. Uh, we got paint basketball hoop and then repair the backstop, um, if we, if we wanna, if that's something we wanna keep there. Kind of, the place, the play area is kind of right where they would play baseball now, but, um, people do periodically use it, so. There'll be discussion on that. Um, Jacobson Park, um, it's more of a flower, uh, garden area. You know, there's no, uh, play structures, anything like that, um, kept up by, uh, volunteer groups, um, right on the corner of Fourth and Cell Street. And so they, they maintain it well with the volunteers, um, there's currently no maintenance, um, that's been brought up for this park that we can see. Then we got Legion Park, that's on Highway fourteen and Tenth Street. So that sand volleyball. Uh, we got a shelter, picnic shelter there, some benches, um, play structure. Swings merry-go-round, teeter totter, and then another half, uh, basketball court there. Um, major things for Legion Park, uh, repair, station boards and paint the picnic shelter, um, and then paint the benches that are there. Um, that's kinda what we have planned there. Nell's Park, that's, uh, as you, mostly you know it as the horseshoe court. We got a shelter, bathhouse, um, and then the horseshoe court area. You can see there. Uh, we got repair picnic shelter, floor grading around shelter and repaint. I know the Lions are involved with that, um, and they've helped out with that in the past. Um, some will probably reach out to them before we do anything with that, but, um, we got some picnic tables that are starting to deteriorate. Uh, we, uh, we actually took one out of there, um, probably end up replacing those. Paint doors, re-ruffed the restrooms, um, as you can see in the picture, there's some shingles missing. Um, and the court lighting, uh, the lights are pretty dim there now, so, um, we got maybe updating that with some brighter lights or add lights to it, uh, and then paint benches. Roadside Park, um, right on the corner of Craig Avenue and Center Street. Um, not much there, but it's a nice little park, um, we got some flower, uh, gardens that was added. I think in the early two thousands, they added the, the revitalization committee, I think, uh, if I remember right. Added the, uh, planters on the corner and the benches, some sidewalks and that. It's got, uh, quite a bit there, there's some spring toys, swings, teeters, uh, merry-go-round, we do have a picnic table there. And we got flower garden in the corner. Uh, very small basketball court, um, I do see it used periodically though, so. Keep up with that, um, then a little grill. We actually have the picnic, picnic table at the shop right now, uh, waiting for its, uh, coating repair kit. So that's in the works and then, uh, the paint, paint the basketball backboard. Sebastian Park, uh, this is kinda integrated with the pool, as you know, um. With the bathhouse, bathrooms, um, we added recently the pet waste disposal here probably about five years ago. Uh, two sand volleyball courts. Two grills, picnic shelter, I must've forgot to add those pictures, um, as you can see in the background. But that's the main play structure there and then there's a smaller one off to the side for the younger age group. Then we got a basketball court, uh, fairly modern basketball hoops on there. Uh, bike rack, racks kinda get used for the pool and, uh, Sebastian Park and the ball fields. T-ball and coach pitch and all that going on there. Um, we got baseball fields, um, you got a flower bed in the parking entrance. Then, uh, large parking area for kinda share with the aquatic, aquatic center in the park. And that's actually slated too for, um, seal coating and crack sealing this year too, as part of the road project. So you got paint doors on, uh, restroom, uh, paint all the benches, replace tires under large equipment features. Uh, we got repair fencing and baseball fields, we did a little bit of that, uh, there's more to come. Add additional agri-lime locate product to help remove, uh, the creeping weeds from agri-lime surface. Uh, install gates, a gate between fields, uh, replace posts on north dugout, uh, there's one that's bent there. Um, install fences by opponent dugouts to prevent ball strikes, uh, to players on the, uh, they were kinda added later, um, for the opponent side. Resurface basketball court, we got some tree removals and poor concrete slabs in dugouts. Uh, we met with the school too on Friday, actually, and discussed some of their needs to, with that, incorporate some of that, um, with our plan.
Is there, is there anything the school could do, like, for the baseball dugouts as far as their buildings and, and, or, or maybe already approached?
Yeah, we, we talked about that, they're going back to, um, build towers, going back to the school and, um, discussing that.
I didn't mean the money, but I meant for them to, building trades classes, you know?
Yep, that was kinda discussed and, um, we're kinda putting a plan together in the early stages of that right now, but. We got the softball complex, um, up by Creamy and Plant Services, uh, north of the highway there. Um, the school's been doing some improvements on that, um, they just added a, uh, the pitching.
Batting cages.
Batting cages, uh, that area, um, it's not in this picture, but it's, it's added here, uh, right on the west side of the concessions or east side of the concessions. Um, we replaced all the doors, we have stainless steel doors on the concessions. I think we finished that early last year. We did the, the main door of the concessions, I think in twenty nineteen, and then we did the other two bathroom doors. They're in pretty rough shape. The school's helped, uh, establishing dugouts, um, since on, on the south field, there's, uh, two dugouts there. So there's a drainage problem on the east side of the complex, um, kinda always been a problem, but we're, we got some ideas as far as, uh, getting that water drained out of the park so it doesn't pool up by the bike path and, uh, that whole area is kind of a swamp, especially in the spring. Um, and like I mentioned, the school's in the process of putting up batting cages in South Field. Um, and then, some of the outfield fences need some work, um, they're kinda curled up real bad. A lot of that could be just, uh, new fence ties and, you know, trying to get that put together. Then we got Swift Lake Park, it's kinda big to get in one picture, but, uh, here's County Road eleven. Just kinda looking, just looking south in the picture. Uh, we got a fishing pier dock, um, benches, teeters, swings, slide, kinda towards the west side of the park. And then restroom showers, uh, for the campsite area, picnic shelter. And we got, uh, fourteen campgrounds currently, uh, twelve with thirty amp hookup, two sites with fifty amp hookup, uh, five sites with water service, then we have a dump station and then we did add provisions during the phase one street project when they did the new outfall line to connect future sewer. Um, so we have a, a connection in the pipe, you know, we didn't run the infrastructure yet, but. There's a, I call it the bridge in an oar right now, sitting at Swift Lake, um, that's actually gonna get put in. Uh, there's some heaved pavement on the bike trail, um, right where a culvert is and the problem there is the culvert's too shallow, so the frost pushes up the, the bike path every year. Like, we fixed it about three times, so we're just gonna remove, completely remove that culvert and then the bridge that's sitting there will go over that. Um, just getting, uh, the foundation put in for that, um, that's planned this summer. Improve the, the riprap by the waterway, just west of the dock. Install new campsite number posts, uh, put new treated post in probably about six or seven years ago and say half of them are already rotted out. Repair, replace the damaged picnic tables, uh, rehab or replace picnic shelter. Floor's kinda broken up, uh, mostly cause of moisture, walls are deteriorating, it needs to be reshingled. Improve drainage around the picnic shelter.
Shane, could we on that picnic shelter, could we tin that roof and the sides? That, that was put up by the J C's.
Yep, we could, um, we have to address the rotting walls and the broken up floor too, so. Um, we haven't really come up with a plan on what we're gonna do with it yet, but it just, uh, identified it as something that needs work.
I know the Lions was interested as a project.
Okay.
And they were thinking of tin.
Yeah. Yeah, tin has its, has its place too. The wind, uh, kinda does different things with tin too that we have to take into consideration, but, um, reshingling the restrooms, that's not really a, a project for tin, being there's, um, skylights there, um, so that would have to go with shingles. Skylights are kinda handy for being able to see in there during the day. Um, we got the tornado tree memorial.
Can I stop you before you go to that one?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, in this whole project, once again, as I always said, they're not gonna seal coat the, the path?
Um, they did seal coat that in fifteen. Um, what it needs now is some crack sealing, the cracks are getting.
Cause did you notice, like, I don't know what the deal is out there, but you know, like, where they have the, the solar things?
Yep.
And that problem that they had out there? That it's starting to, to erode the bike path right there?
So we took care of the water, I guess, leaking over the bike path unless it started up again after this last rain.
It's like, you know, where, cause it's all dirt right there and mud and so it's like starting to, like, break it away right there.
Yeah, I can look at that again, but, um, there's a tile that was broke there. It was constantly bubbling out of the ground, like, there's like three different repairs, we had to do that tile before we finally got it to take water, but that was fixed last year. So the tile's been working, it, say, wasn't wet there this spring. I haven't checked it after this last rain we got last week, but we're hoping that's.
Probably once they start grass and stuff there, it'll probably help it from doing that, but right now, it's taking it away.
Yeah.
So are you planning on filling cracks on that path this summer?
It's not planned for the summer. Right now, we're trying to figure out what the best product to use. If they get too wide with the rubber, you get someone on roller blades, they can get, they can trip. So we're looking at, I'm actually gonna look and see what, what they do with the runway project and what type of material they use. Um, if that works out well, I'm thinking about maybe using that on the bike path too. Um, it's more of a, it's not a rubber, it's more of a, like, an aggregate product that'll, that'll fill it up flush, you know, where you won't sink in. If you get a gap this wide and you put rubber in there, we're worried about being a tripping hazard. But yeah, that's, so we know about the cracks and they're gonna get put in the plan somewhere, just a matter of where. Tornado Tree Memorial, um, monument was put in, I think, around twenty fourteen, don't quote me on that, but, um, then we added a concrete slab around that. This parking area here, that's all part of the phase three A two, so that's gonna get repaved, it's in pretty tough shape. That whole intersection's pretty tough right now. Then we got the tornado tree replica, as you can see there, and then, uh, welcome to Tracy signing in the background. So the biggest thing there, um, is sandblasting and repainting the tornado tree replica, it's starting to rust again. We repainted it when they put the memorial up, it's been six years. When the state plow goes by, they always throw salt on it and it just doesn't last real long.
Would that be something we could take somewhere and have it powder coated?
Yeah, I guess I'm not real sold on powder coating, but we already had to recoat the trains once on the liquor store.
Was that powder coating's fault or the application, I guess?
I don't know.
I'm not pointing fingers, but.
Yeah.
We have equipment that's powder coated and it's still.
If it's done right, if you can find a place that'll do it, um, it holds up well, um, I guess it's an option. Uh, we got Veltam Memorial, that's pretty modern, um, it's all volunteer, um, maintained. I got volunteers that mow it. That was put in about twenty-ten or eleven, if I ever to guess, uh, maybe a little earlier. Uh, so you got a gazebo, benches, um, got some walking paths there. So it's built kinda within the last decade, it's in great condition yet. Don't see anything maintenance unless, uh, someone brings something forward, but. We may have missed, uh, we got Warner Park, um, call it the lower, you know, it's the lower park of, at the pool. We got swings, uh, teeters, a slide and a little spinny thing. We forgot the spinny thing pictures, so then it snowed, so we have to go back. There's a, we, we put a pad in for a garbage can, we have to get the receptacle ordered. I thought I had ordered it, but, uh, we can't seem to find that one. We were, I think one was, uh, I don't know if one was on backward or we canceled it, but we have the foundation in for it. Um, and then we put the, uh, the pet waste disposal there, um, at the same time, um, so that's in place. We got some trees to trim. Been a rough winter on trees and kinda on all the parks. Got some branches to take down, um, I think there's a whole tree in Warner Park that has to come down to. That's all I have. That's all I have.
All the parks.
You don't know how many parks you have until you actually go through them all.
We have about twice as many park acres per capita than the average city in the country. So it's a huge amenity that the city has. It really is.
And we have budgeted money for doing all these things that he pointed out?
Um, yes. We, we do have a budget for that. One of the things that's a little bit different about 2021 is that, there's probably some things that actually are really going to fall off this list that we're not going to be able to do because of budget, just to be honest. Some of the stuff at the ban shelf, for example, is probably more costly than we can afford. But, but in previous years, there was not a line item for parks. It was all folded into streets. We changed that this year, so you actually have a, a line item now, and so I think it's something that's worth discussing in the future. You know, how big do you want that to be? You know, what kind of conditions do you want your parks to be in? So you have more visibility on it now. We'll get a better idea of what it's going to take to continue to maintain things after this year, and then that'll be part of the discussion with the budget.
This listing and this assessment is very helpful. Thank you for doing that. Really good.
Shane did a great job. It's very similar to what we were kind of doing with the street project, you know, with the street maintenance project where we went out and looked at all the roads and decided what exactly we needed to do to them. You know, it's, it's the kind of thing that makes sense for us to do, because i- if you don't know what it is that you have, and what your maintenance schedule is, you can't, you can't budget for it. So, so we're trying to create a kind of a, a, a list of all these assets and then put them on a regular schedule for maintenance, and then they last longer and they look nicer.
Would some of those projects be something that, you know, like how the school, every spring, they usually helped do different projects? I know they painted the food shelf. They've done some work out at the horseshoe park, you know, at the ballparks. I mean, is it something that we could work with the school on some of that stuff also?
Yeah, and that's kind of why it's nice to have a plan, so we know where we can send them to. I mean, there's limits what they can do, too, but I haven't, the school hasn't reached out yet. I don't know if they're going to do, I know they didn't do it last year, Community Service Day or whatever. You know, it's usually during the last week of school. So that, you know, it could be a possibility out this year with COVID. I'm not sure. Depends on how this, everything ends up at the school at the end of the year, but I know C and B Operations reached out to me. They want to do a Community Service Day, where they take half their staff in the morning, the other half of their staff in the afternoon, to do kind of whatever project, you know, we need done. They want to do something this year. Didn't work out real well last year with COVID and everything shut down. But they, yeah, they wanted to do it last year, too, so. But, you know, that's another option for doing some of this maintenance stuff. But a lot of these, a lot of the stuff that was brought up, you know, on the slides, some of that stuff is real low dollar, you know, so that stuff will be fairly easy to, to get done, but, you know, like the, the ban shelf's probably the biggest, most costly project that we have as far as maintenance goes. And there's some resurfacing of some courts, you know, deciding what we'd do with the tennis court and some of the basketball courts, too. That's all kind of in the works as far as the plan goes, so.
Well, and like George said, even, you know, to use Carl and that out at the school, if, you know, they're looking at a project and wanting to, you know, build a new warming house or, you know, something like that with the, through the class.
Yeah, we'll make sure we bring that up, because we talked to Bill Tower last week, and he suggested we reach out to Carl to talk about the softball field, so it, you know.
Well, you have a perfect person to do that.
Yeah, so we're going to have, we're going, we got an in, and so we'll, we'll, we definitely will have a conversation with Carl pretty shortly. I think that's a really good idea. You know, that's something that we hadn't considered. It makes sense to me.
Do a little whispering over dinner, Diane.
Even picnic tables, you know.
How about the scouts? Shane, could we get them involved here in some of the stuff?
Possibly.
They're always looking for projects.
No one's reached out to me, but it's, it's an option.
That's right, even this Keep America Beautiful.
Yeah.
Thing would pull everything.
Yeah, and, and that's where, that was, that's what that's about, is really creating a structure around it, so that when you have, you know, projects like this, then you can, you can do that, you know? A lot of this stuff, like Shane said, is really low dollar, really simple. Well, we just need to go through and paint all of the picnic tables and the benches. Well, that's, paint's not real expensive. That's mostly just elbow grease, you know? So it's a great kind of volunteer activity. So I, I, you know, we, we start with, you know, creating a list of everything we need to do, and we start knocking them off. Not everything's going to get done this year, but, but a lot of it will, and it'll look That's all we have with that, Mayor. That's a lot of staff presentation for tonight. Thanks for your patience. I appreciate that.
Can I mention one more thing? There's some markings on some trees in the Phase Three A two area. Their contract's actually starting tomorrow. We're doing some of the removals. I've gotten a couple of calls today already as far as, you know, hey, have my trees marked? You know, what's going on? In the open house, they kind of went through all the trees that were getting removed during this project, and some people showed up, some people don't. So some people don't quite know what, what's all happening with that if they didn't show up to that. It's been a little over a year ago, so anything that's, that's marked with an X is going to get taken out, and it's primarily because either it's, it's messing with the foundation of a curb sidewalk, or a lot of them have sewer or water service underneath them, and to make that connection, the trees have to be removed. It's actually detrimental to the sewer and water connections, too, to have roots growing around them, so. So if you hear anything of that, just want to let everybody know that, as long as we're having a meeting here, so.
How many trees?
I don't know that number for sure, but it sounds like most of them will be taken out by the end of the week. So the contractor reached out to me at about four thirty today, so.
The end of this week?
The way it sounded, the weather.
So it's mostly ones that were either close to sidewalks, close to.
Curbs or sitting on top of a water sewer. Yep.
I had one thing that I forgot for the, the Mayor Communication Council. So we hear through the paper that one of the employees is leaving, and I forgot to ask you about this earlier, but.
Yes.
Would it, I just thought it would be nice if you would send a thing out to the council members in case it ever happens again, because people say so and so, and then you're like, I don't know, I didn't know about that.
I, you're right. That's, that's, that's our mistake. We should have done that. Yes, absolutely.
Just as an FYI.
Yes, yes, that's a good piece of feedback. That's our fault. We should have done that, yes. April, April is going to go work for the dentist. So as, as, as far as we know, it's just, you know, something that, you know, worked for her better, and so we are in the process of interviewing, Chris is in the process of interviewing for that position right now, and we're hoping to have someone place, you know, relatively quickly, so we don't have too much of a lapse. But thank you, you're right. We, we absolutely should have, yeah, of course. I should have said something, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, my fault.
That's all I got. So shall we move on to resolutions?
Sure. The first one on the list is Resolution 2021-40. This is to set the cleanup day rates and amend the fee schedule, so you set all the fees, of course, as you know. The cleanup day is on May fifteenth. We have, we're proposing to increase and modify some of the fees this year. This is mostly because the, the county landfill has dramatically increased their prices for a lot of things. And so in, in many cases, we're still kind of subsidizing and selling it for a loss, or taking them stuff for a loss, but, but we just couldn't absorb, you know, particularly tires. I mean, it, it's just, it's gotten out of control what they're charging us now for tires, particularly when they're on a rim. So what you have is a new set of fees associated with that. Shane and Diane and I met and, and kind of, kind of have this proposal. If you have any questions about what the fees are specifically, we'd be happy to answer them.
And we will always take volunteers.
Yes, we need volunteers for that day, too.
So the new fees are highlighted in yellow?
That's correct.
I still feel those fees are relatively reasonable, though. In fact, I was going to suggest bumping them up a little more.
Do these compare to the landfill or our, for example, I'm going to use.
In, in, in most, in most cases, they're either the same or lower. There's, I don't think there's a single fee on here that's higher than the landfill. We're not making any money on anything, you know? But there was a few that the landfill just got to be so expensive, we didn't feel right about charging that much, and so it's a little bit less, but they're either the same or less than what the landfill charged.
Now, our list of appliances and those have been taken locally to someone who's been recycling the park.
I'm not sure, Shane, do you know?
Is that where that's going to go?
No, this all goes to the landfill, but where do we take the appliances?
There's an appliance recycling guy that.
You're right.
That, that seal core not available, as most have known, but.
And that's been working out all right, though.
Yep.
Okay.
And that helps with the site, too, because a lot of the heavy stuff could get unloaded once instead of us taking it and then bringing it back down three blocks, so.
Is he charging us, is Ron charging us the same, like on an appliance, ten bucks? He hasn't gone up on that since last, last year, has he?
I think the only one up was with TVs, and that's why all that changed as far as.
It's the TVs that are bad, too. So with that, Mayor, you know, we'd, we'd ask that you pass this resolution to amend the new fees for the cleanup day.
What is the hours for that?
Nine to four.
Nine to four?
On May fifteenth.
Yep.
Are we going to have a rain date on that if the forecast just.
We're going to do it rain or shine.
Rain or shine. It's the perils of doing it in May.
Seems like.
We could, we could have a rain out on the rain day.
Well, if that's what it takes for it to rain, let's do it.
We usually do it in the rain.
Are you happy you just got that?
Diane, same location?
Anybody like to pass that resolution?
Sure, I would like to do that.
You'd take them for the team. A second?
I'll stick in that motion, George.
First and second, any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Landay.
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Chow?
Aye.
Corbin?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is the city logo. So we've had several discussions about this. The last time that we met, you asked me to start to get some feedback from some other members of the community, so we had some boards and commissions meetings and some other things, and so we took a round of folks. So we met with the EDA, we met with the Planning Commission, we met with the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee as well, as well as other members of the community that just happened to be around and look at it, to get some feedback from people. There's a few kind of really big things that they said. One is that I think everybody agrees that, you know, whichever direction that we go, that, that it's better where we were, and it's, it's going to be a good thing. Second of all, a lot of folks expressed the idea of having maybe a, you know, maybe some of the logo was a little too dark, the blue was a little too dark, and wanting to lighten that up a little bit. And the third one was just about, you know, this, this logo that has the bars sticking out in the end, you know? A lot of people are like, I don't, I don't know what that is. Why is that there? It doesn't make sense to me, and so there was that piece of feedback about that logo specifically. So what I did was is that I took that, that feedback, and I created what you could see a bunch of different versions of it. Now, that looks a little daunting, because you're probably thinking, oh my God, there's so many choices, I don't know what to do, you know? But I, I, what I'd like to do is hopefully get to the point where we can, you know, agree on what direction we're going to go. I want to walk through what you have in front of you, just kind of one piece at a time, so that it's not so daunting. Now, in each one of these cases, there's one in the, at the bottom that says BMW, that means black and white. You're always going to have a black and white logo, because you might have like a black and white newspaper print ad or something, so that's not a choice. That's just what it would look like if it were in black and white. So you've really got twelve choices, essentially, but really it's, it's two with variations. So kind of my first thought was, okay, you know, what are your thoughts just about in the, in the big picture? You've kind of got the two choices. You've got, you know, this stamped logo with a little bit of train with the white background, and then you've got this other logo that, that has, has the bigger train with the gold. And so I, I would like to start there first in terms of your thoughts, maybe pick a direction in one of those, and then we can start to narrow it down from there, if that works for you. What are your thoughts at this point? Do you have a preference?
The one that I liked was one F. I like it because Tracy stands out, the first thing you see. The train doesn't dominate. The train has a nice little touch, but it's, I don't think we want to be known as the home of the, of an old train exclusively. I, I, I think the combination is nice. I really like one F personally. The only thing I think we need to change is on all of them is that we've, instead of established eighteen seventy, eighteen seventy-five would be the correct date.
We did some research on that, actually, and eighteen seventy-five is not the correct date. That's the, that's the correct date for when the city was platted, but there are two other dates as well. Eighteen eighty-one, we were incorporated as a village, so we were the Village of Tracy in eighteen eighty-one. We were officially incorporated as the City of Tracy in eighteen ninety-three. So you can pick eighteen eighty-one if you want to honor the village, eighteen seventy-five if you want to honor the plating of the city, or eighteen ninety-three when we became a city.
So what's eighteen?
None of them is, eighteen seventy is none of them, but, but it is, that is a choice we should make as far as how we want to, how we want to do that.
Yeah. To me, eighteen, the older you can list, the better, and since eighteen seventy-five was the date that the Chicago Northwestern platted the Village of Tracy, and they chose the name Tracy, to me, I'd use eighteen seventy-five, but others may disagree.
Yes, well, you can put any date on there, as long as you justify it. It's not eighteen seventy, though. I know that.
It's eighteen seventy-eight.
That's probably why it says that there.
But anyway, I do like the design of one F. It has its eye-catching, it has, it's not overly crowded or busy, and I think it would just work for anything you have. For whatever reason, I agree with you.
That was my, that was my preference, too.
All right, that, that catches me the fastest.
What do you think, Cool?
I'm down to one C or one F, too, so.
What about you, Jerry?
I was for the one F. I like the blue because it goes along with the school blue, and that was brought up at one of the meetings, that, you know, the school has been the red and blue. My question is if it's just the pictures or what? If the font is the same on like one D that it is on one F?
Yes, it's the same.
Okay, because I could read one D better, and maybe it's just, but I actually had my readers on.
They're, they're the same.
So I just wanted to make sure it was probably the pictures, that the font was the same.
Yes, it's the same.
So no, I like the one F. I think it's very, that Tracy does capture you right away.
What do you think, Ron?
One F with eighteen seventy-five, Seth.
Okay, there you have it.
Wow, that was easy. I was afraid. Jeff, Jeff lectured me for two days about how I gave you too many choices, and it was easy. Jeff, Jeff lectured me for two days about how I gave you too many choices and it was easy. Okay. One F and I'll, and I'll work with Above the Fold to, to get this, get this, get the date.
So where does it date 1870?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
That's the date Lang County was established.
Caleb, let me ask you one question about that though.
Yeah.
Is it better to pull, I think I asked you this one other time. Is it better to pull Tracy and, and all that down a tidbit than having all that white space between Tracy and Minnesota?
No, it's not better. This is perfect.
I'm thinking the top of Tracy is probably mid. You know, that, that line there is probably about midway in the circle would be my guess without.
Madam Mayor, let's just go with this.
All right, I'm good.
One F.
All right, we beat it to death enough?
Yes.
Okay, so one F with 1875. So we, I do need a motion though on, on, uh, 2021-41. And we, and please indicate one F, 1875.
Yeah, that's, that's good. I, did we have a motion for that?
We don't have a motion.
No, we're waiting for you.
We need your motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Oh, I'll second it.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Tal?
Aye.
Truman?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Mayor Cornyn?
Aye.
Uh, the next item, Mayor, uh, 2021 dash 43 is adopting the 2222 budget schedule. Feels like we just ended the last one, but it's time to start the next one. I'm so sorry, but that's the way it goes. There's, um, it's going to be pretty similar to last year, um, in terms of how it's going to work. What's, there's a couple of study sessions in there for, for us to discuss the budget. Last year, we spent the first, uh, study session talking about what your goals and priorities are, which of course we've already done this year. So we're going to have a slightly different topic in that to, you know, to talk some more about some budget items, but I'm still proposing that we have it. So essentially it's, you know, two study sessions, the staff will meet. Every other date that's on there is the statutory requirement that you, that you do. Um, and, um, this is, uh, kind of kicking off the process.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021 dash 43 to adopt the 2022 budget schedule.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Tal, Landay?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Truman?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Cornyn?
Aye.
Last item, Mayor, is the one that we added at the beginning. It's just basically authorizing the street to be closed for a couple of hours on May 1st for the, uh, for the spring formal grand march.
So if the weather's not decent, then they'll just scratch it?
I think, I think, I think so is the short answer because I, the, the prom is inside, so.
What does the city have to do to get ready for that, anything?
Um, I think we sweep the streets, um, and then we'll block it off and that's pretty much it.
We're sweeping on Wednesday this week.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021 dash 44 to, for the street closure for the spring formal.
Uh, second.
First and second, any further discussion?
I think it sounds like a very historic event.
You know, I want to make this one comment just so that the public knows and everybody else knows that they did talk about inclines and get it okay with them also. So, okay, roll call, please.
Um, Tal?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Truman?
Aye.
Mayor Cornyn?
Aye. Do we have a motion to close the regular meeting to the closed meeting?
So moved.
Look at.
First and second, sure no discussion on that one. Do we need a roll call or can we just?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, pair.
Thank you.